I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. Everyone is present with the exception of Melissa Anger. And before I take a motion to approve the agenda, we'll be removing Letter D under Personnel, and a revision of that job description will be coming back to us in the future. With that note, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Enrique. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
That motion carries six-zero. On our consent agenda tonight are the, under financials, is the check wire transfer dispersment summaries for February and March, the wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity for February and March, bank reconciliation statement for February, building bond investment reports for February and March, monthly wire detail for February and March, monthly health and dental wire detail for February and March, monthly check detail for February and March, monthly ACH detail for February and March, approval of the school board minutes for the regular meeting on March 4th, and the board study session on March 25th, the resignations as listed, and the designation, or, excuse me, to designate the identified official to access MDE secure website. This annual designation is to District Controller Michelle Seifert. She will be the designated official for the 2019-20 year. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Michael. All those in favor, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries six-zero. Onto resolution of acceptance of gifts. Monetary gifts from Wells Fargo, Jeffers Pond, Mrs. Sazama, Charities Aid Foundation of America, and Patrons of the Arts and Activities, and Value and Kind from the Lampert family. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts?
So made.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Jonathan. That's a rule called vote. So, Michael?
Aye.
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 And that motion carries six-zero. Next on our agenda is Laker Pride, Lakers Showcase, actually.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's meeting. We have an opportunity tonight to get a chance to hear about some of the work that's being done with our youngest learners, with our early childhood program. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, we believe that academic skills, as well as social-emotional learning skills, can and need to be taught in order for students to thrive. A few months ago, you heard about, from Greenwood staff, about our PBIS program that we have at our elementary, middle school, and high school level. And tonight, we're going to hear the early learning model that we use around some of the socially-emotional learning. So with that, I'm going to introduce Becca Richardson, our early learning coordinator, to begin the presentation, and she has some of her amazing staff with her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow. Good evening, school board members. Thank you for having us today. Our Circle of Friends preschool program supports kindergarten readiness through a whole-child developmental approach. And after much research, we have begun a five-year commitment with the Pyramid Model Innovation, which is through the Centers of Excellence. Excuse me. It is an innovation promoting positive social-emotional development and kindergarten readiness in our youngest learners, and it is the precursor to PBIS. So it aligns very well with what these students will experience when they enter kindergarten in our schools. Tonight, I have some very amazing team members here tonight that will give you this nuts and bolts and overview of our first year with the program, how we expect it to go for the next five years, and some positive outcomes, and they will introduce themselves as they come up. So, thank you.
Awesome.
Well, my name is Amy Cerny, and I am a teaching assistant at Edgewood.
I'm Courtney Stevens. I am an early childhood special education teacher at Edgewood.
And I'm Tredie Jory. I'm a preschool teacher at Greenwood.
Awesome. So I think that takes care of that slide, so we'll keep moving.
All right. So here is our pyramid implementation team. So you can tell by the picture that we have a lot of fun. We have some thumbs up. We've got some bunny ears. We have a lot of fun in our team. But that being said, who is on our implementation team, and what does this look like? So, first of all, we have two classrooms that are about eight months into the implementation. And each year, we're going to keep adding new classrooms to training and implementation, but it takes about five years to fidelity, which I know we had already mentioned before. But, so, if you look at our team, so not only do we have support from administration, from both sides, general education and also ECFE, we have preschool teachers, we have ECSE teachers, we have teaching assistants, we also have OT, parent educators, speech and language pathologists. So we have a lot of people that are helping make this pyramid model successful. So a couple of things that we think about from a preschool perspective, as we're trying to help get our preschoolers ready to enter kindergarten. There's a lot of math and reading and all of the different skills, but when we think about the social-emotional skills that we want to make sure that they have to be successful, we think about building their confidence, just making sure that they are confident in themselves, in their abilities, and what they're able to do. Also, developing positive relationships with peers, with adults, is also very important, as you guys know. Making sure they can concentrate, making sure that they are persistent and are trying and trying again on challenging types of tasks. Also, communication is important. It's tough for little ones to communicate their emotions, so that's something that we're working hard on, is being able to communicate, "I feel this way," or "I feel that way." And if they don't know, then we're helping them to identify what those emotions are. We're also helping them to develop an ability to listen to instructions. Obviously, we know that's important for them to be able to learn and be attentive. They, they have to do that. And then also solving social problems, which we'll talk a little bit more about here as well. So if we break down the pyramid model and what it looks like, it's, it's a pyramid. So if we look at the bottom, let's just break it down from the bottom. So we have an effective workforce at the bottom, ourselves, everyone included, here and within the implementation team. We utilize an evidence-based practices that we are finding works really, really well. Also, if we think about the second tier, the nurturing and responsive relationships, and also the third tier, which is high-quality supportive environments, that's something that all children are getting. Those are really, really important. If we get to the fourth tier, which is green, that is, some children are getting that. So that's a more targeted approach. So maybe we have some that need a little bit more love, maybe we need to give them a little bit more coaching on social skills and how to kind of solve problems, preventative measures. And then our top, which is few children, is an intensive intervention. So some of those may have more behavior issues that we need to identify and just need a little bit more support. Hopefully, that makes sense. I know that not for everyone, they look at this, it doesn't make sense, but if you have questions, feel free to let us know. Thanks. So the goal of the pyramid model is working for us to help promote the children's success. We want to create an environment where every child feels good about coming to school. We also want to design an environment that promotes child engagement and focus on teaching the children what to do, instead of always focusing on what they're doing wrong. We work hard on teaching the expectations of the school, in our classrooms, in routines. We work teaching skills that children can use in place of the challenging behaviors. And we also teach tools to solve social problems with their peers, and we'll dig into that a little bit more here. So, like was discussed earlier, the pyramid model does align well with the positive behavior intervention supports, PBIS, that is used higher up in the district. It also aligns with the parent-aware system that our Circle of Friends preschool class is, we've enforced our ratings. The rating. It also aligns well with the world's best workforce, the Second Step Social Skills Curriculum that's used in the district, and also the classroom engagement model. So our focus for our first year in this initiative is really, we're working on increasing our use of visual schedules in the classrooms. So whereas, you know, we have a visual set up, we're trying to use more of those, we're trying to use more individual schedules with those children that need it, we're also utilizing something called the Solution Toolkit that helps the students to solve some common social problems. We're working on creating more common expectations that will be used building-wide, teaching those to all of the students, and also making sure that those expectations are posted. We're increasing our use of strategies to increase parent engagement by making sure that we are making the families aware of what the pyramid model is, what it looks like, how we're using it, and then also giving families ways that they can use some of the strategies at home as well. And then also teaching and using the problem-solving steps. So, this is what the solution toolbox looks like. So we are working, using some of these tools, such as asking nicely, get a teacher, play together, ignore, say please stop, that teaching the students that these are some more acceptable problem-solving strategies. We're also advocating independence, once those strategies are taught. So once we've taught the strategies, then we're really increasing the students to be able to access the solution toolbox and use it independently with their peers to help them solve the problems. And then this is also something that we're working on, you know, creating that homeschool collaboration. We have sent it home with our students and the families, and encouraged families to also use this at home, because we do get lots of questions from parents, like, "How can we, you know, how can we get Johnny and Suzie to stop arguing or fighting over toys?" You know, I feel like we hear that a lot. So being able to share the solution toolbox with families and give them something that their child has used at school, but then can also carry over at home. And then also, kind of, the steps to problem-solving. You know, first, we stop and think about, "What is the problem, and how can I fix it?" And then try to think about, "Well, what would happen if something happened?" And thinking, "Is it safe? Is it fair? How's everybody going to feel?" And then trying out the idea.
So, expectations. We've kind of talked a little bit about that tonight, but we have been creating the expectations for our program. We have a couple of classrooms that are being coached, that those two teams have been collaborating together to write expectations. They're similar to what you might see in an elementary school. I know at Greenwood, they have cares posters, and then in the different areas, like in the hallway, bathroom, that type of thing. So we've kind of been looking at that as a model for that. We're also focusing on positives on our posters that we are creating for expectations, so we're using "I can" statements on that. And in addition to make, or writing the expectations, we are writing social stories. A social story is just kind of a story that goes along with visuals that teaches the kids how to use the expectations and how to access them. And then we've also created some videos that's using kind of similar to social modeling technique, or video modeling, excuse me. And I'm going to share one of the videos that we've made. Bathroom Rules. I can follow the rules in the bathroom. At school, I use the bathroom. When I use the bathroom, I can remember the rules. Sometimes in the bathroom, the floor gets wet. I can use my walking feet to stay safe. At school, we share the bathroom with others. I can wait my turn in line. When I wait for my turn, my friends will know that I care. I am being kind. I can keep my hands to myself. When I keep my hands to myself, my friends will know that I care about their privacy. I am being kind. I can keep my eyes from looking at others. When I keep my eyes from looking at others, my friends will know that I care about their privacy. I am being kind. The bathroom can be a loud place. I can use a number one or two voice. When I use a number one or two voice, I am being responsible. When I use the bathroom, I get germs on my hands. I can wash my hands so the germs go away. When I wash my hands, I am being responsible. At school, I use the bathroom. When I use the bathroom, I can remember the rules, and my teachers and friends will be happy.
This one? No. That one? Mm-hmm. Didn't go down.
Uh-uh.
Pull that down.
Right here?
No, here.
How about you pull?
Nope, you're okay.
Sorry. I don't think pushing escape was a good idea. I don't see it.
I don't see it. Nope.
Whoops.
In the meantime, can I ask if I can plagiarize that and use it in my house full of adults? Because that was really good. Those are, those are really helpful, in my delay. So I've implemented some of the toolbox items in my home. I have a two-year-old and a six-year-old, and it is amazing. My two-year-old boy, boys' boy, will be ready to grab at his sister and grab the toy and scream, "I want it!" And then she'll just say, "Get the timer." And he stops, takes his hands off, gets the timer. Now, he can't quite set it for the proper time, but he's so proud that he's taken ownership over this conflict resolution, and I know Amy, you've been doing the same too.
Yep, that's what we're doing.
And we have him posted in our kitchen.
Yes, visuals.
Yep, it's awesome. It's amazing.
So what are we seeing for success so far? Obviously, having administrative support is very helpful, this process. We also, in the coach classrooms, have bi-weekly observations with our coaches, and then we also have bimonthly coaching meetings with our coaches. So when we have an observation, there's usually a goal that we're looking at, and then data is collected. And then at those coaching meetings, we go over that data and then create new goals to work on. In addition to that, I know we've mentioned a little bit about the homeschool connection. Some of the things, like the toolbox is one way we've connected with families. I know I've also gotten more specific with some students, where they're needing some different kinds of supports, but they're also having similar behaviors at home. So example of that might be that both of our classrooms have calm-down areas in that, and then we have a lot of language that we use when we're helping kids to go to the calm-down area, and what we do to help them calm in those areas. I've shared that with some families, and they're also creating calm-down areas at home. So it's overlapping, so you might see more generalized things we're sharing, but also very specific things for certain kiddos. And then the biggest success that we've seen is what we're seeing with the kiddos, the preschoolers. We're seeing each day that they're showing the skills. They're using the toolbox. They're talking about their emotions. They're able to manage their emotions differently than they did at the beginning of the school year. And we know that that social-emotional area is huge. So when they move on to kindergarten, having some of those skills, and actually, that confidence piece, I think, going back to that too, having confidence in themselves, knowing, "Oh, I got this. I can solve problems with my friends. I know how to do this. I know what to do when I do get mad. It's okay to be mad, but I know what to do when I feel that way." So that, I think, is going to be huge as they move into kindergarten and the future years as well. So what's next? Next year, we are going to be implementing the pyramid training into two or three new classrooms. That would include the coaching and then the actual trainings that you have to attend. Our team, more than just us, but we will be presenting at the Pyramid Implementation Training. That's at the end of April. That's where all of the groups in the state get together and share what we're doing. So that's coming up fairly soon. And then we will also be finalizing our behavior expectations so that we can implement that program-wide next year. Thank you for letting us present tonight. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
We've got just a certificate. We want to thank you, not only for taking the time tonight to share this with us, but for all the work that you do. You are the first, the first route for our parents and our kids to learn what is school, and what do we do to create the culture that we want to create. So thank you for being here, for all your work, and for sharing it with us tonight. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw the sigh, Terry. You might as well come back up here. I'm going to stand here with me, because I'm messing this one myself.
The mic is off.
Well, if you read the paper at all, you already know this news, but Dr. Terry Stallow has been named an Administrator of Excellence. I'll be giving her a certificate in a little while here, but the one, the plaque she has in her office is just phenomenal. It's really nice-looking, so you might want to look at that one instead. I'm sure you will, instead of this one, but... The Minnesota Association of School Board Administrators has named Dr. Terry Stallow Superintendent of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools a 2019 Administrator of Excellence. Dr. Stallow received this award in recognition of her leadership, concern for students, and active involvement in professional and community affairs. She was honored at a statewide recognition ceremony during the Massa, Mass Spring Conference in early March. Dr. Stallow's achievements reflect her ability to lead important changes in the educational system. Under her leadership, the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools approved adjustments to the district's strategic plan with input of more than 123 school and community members, and those changes will be implemented in July 2019. After an unsuccessful referendum in 2016, Dr. Stallow implemented an unprecedented community engagement process for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. A 50-member Community Facilities Task Force was formed that included additional community feedback loops, and ultimately led to the recommendations to the school board to shape a new referendum request, which was successfully passed in 2017. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is also the only district in the state to have an environmental education program that grows with the students from early childhood family education to high school. The district's award-winning programs have been modeled by school districts throughout the state and country. In 2013, the U.S. Department of Education recognized Prior Lake Savage Area Schools as one of the first-ever green-ribbon schools, sustainability districts in the nation for their energy-efficient buildings, healthy students, and school environment and environmental literacy of all graduates. Dr. Stallow is an active Massa member, currently serving as the Chair of the Executive Development Committee. She serves on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, Board of Directors, and the Executive and Legislative Committees. Dr. Stallow is also a member of Schools for Equity and Education, the Scott Family Net Steering Committee, and the Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency. Dr. Stallow received a PhD in Educational Policy and Administration, and a master's degree in Curriculum Instruction from the University of Minnesota. Each year, Massa recognizes members for their contributions to public education. Massa is a professional organization of Minnesota's school leaders, including superintendents, assistant superintendents, directors of special education, and other central office administrators, as well as State Department administrators, college and university professors, and other educators throughout Minnesota dedicated to educational leaderships. We're very proud of Dr. Stallow, and glad that she's with us here at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. So here's your paper certificate. Congratulations. Well, thank you very much, and thank you to my family, that I had no idea we're going to be here. Thanks for coming. Clean up well. Very nice. It is a pleasure to serve this school district, as I hope I have never, it's never been a secret of how I feel, and this award is not an award for me. It's an award for an unbelievable team, an unbelievable school board, and a community that supports education and always puts kids first. And I am proud to be able to serve here with all of you, and look forward to the continued work that we'll do together to ensure that our mission, which is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive, oh my gosh, I lost it, there it is, contributing productive members of our ever-changing global community. Thank you very much.
On that note, we'll move on to personnel items. Jim?
All right. We've got several personnel issues for you to consider tonight, starting with 9A Candidates for Employment. So on page 475 of your board packet is a list of candidates for employment, and we are requesting that you take action on these as presented in your board packet.
Do I have a motion to approve the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Mary, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero.
Second would be the approval of district retirements. These four individuals will be honored at the district retirement ceremony or celebration May 16th. And I'll read those, because they're, obviously, some of these people have been here quite some time, Laura Bulkey, Marla Falkerson, Sarah Mer, and Jennifer Reinhold. It looks like they have a combined level of service of probably 75, 80 years of time in the district, so they'll be recognized, again, the district retirement celebration on May 16th.
Do I have a motion to approve the district retirements?
So made.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Mary, any comments or questions, concerns? It's a lot of years, and I want to offer, on behalf of the board, to say, "Thank you for all of their time and effort that they put in over the years." And for me personally, Sarah and Jennifer had my kids a number of years ago, and they're awesome. So they'll be missed. I'm sure there'll be somebody that'll take over for them, but they're awesome, so...
Okay. 9C?
I need to get a vote. Sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Now it's your turn.
Okay. The approval of the leaves of absences. There are seven for your consideration, and vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the leaves of absence?
So moved.
By Michael, second?
Second.
Enrique, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Approval of additional staffing requests.
All right. So the first one would be for this current year, and in your board packet, it was page 503. It's a special education median term sub, and that's a result of increased student numbers in early childhood.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the additional staffing requests for licensed staff for 2018-19?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Second.
By Enrique, comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero.
The second one would be additional staffing for next year. This would be based upon historical anticipated increase in enrollment for additional staffing for the 2019-20 regular education 8.7 FTEs.
Do I have a motion to approve the additional staffing requests for 2019-20 licensed staff?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Michael, comments or questions? Stacy?
You know, in years past, we've kind of, I mean, we have anticipation of what enrollment's going to be, but we've, have a tendency to kind of hold back a little bit, so we, assuming we're doing that same type of thing? So these won't necessarily all be hired, like, immediately.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero.
All right. And then, excuse me, the last one is additional staffing. Again, for next year, this would be educational support staff, custodians, and building secretaries, basically a result of the referendum and the building of the new elementary school.
Do I have a motion to approve the additional staffing, educational support staff for 2019-20?
So moved.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Michael, comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Moving on to unfinished business, facilities planning and construction. Holmberg. Jim?
For this evening, I'm going to defer presentation to Director Delwo and Assistant Director Mullen, and Jeff Martin from Nexus.
Okay.
Good evening. Chair Schimmick, School Board, Dr. Stallow. We have a PowerPoint to go through first of a construction update, and then we will be looking for approval for early bid package, high school, or Hamilton Ridge.
That doesn't look right. Yeah, it's one we brought up.
Jeff, you sure you don't want to stay up here?
All right. Chair Schimmick, Dr. Stallow, members of the Board, thank you so much for your time and attention with this today. We put this update together last week, and especially with it being spring break week, things were just going gangbusters here, and these are so outdated already, but it'll bring you up to speed with where we are, and I'll talk a little bit about what happened since last week, so...all right, one more. Do I need to click it every time? Or...
See if it's all working.
There we go. All right. We are just going to start right away with Edgewood. Just to remind you, oh, this is not going a lot faster than I even planned. Well, we want to keep the meeting moving.
Get everybody holding the tip off.
That one forward. All righty. So my motto is "When in doubt, click," which I probably shouldn't always do. So going right to Edgewood. So to be reminded of the project, so the main project right now is the connection of the two buildings with the cafeteria addition, which also includes a mechanical space, a kitchen, and two new restrooms. This summer, we'll be doing the other spaces inside of Westwood. And you can see on the slide where those are. A close-up of the addition, so the main space is, of course, the cafeteria. The top of that is the new kitchen. Below on the left is the mechanical space, and on the right are the restrooms. This is looking from Westwood across the new cafeteria to Edgewood. So this is...you'll be coming through double doors into the cafeteria from that side. This wall...these are looking at some of the mechanical systems going in, hot and cold, steam...sorry, not steam, but heat and cooling, as well as the plumbing lines running across. Temporary heat up there for curing the concrete and keeping it warm enough to do the other work. Outside, this is looking at it from the bus drop-off. This is the decorative blockwork, which is both inside and outside the building. And above it is where the windows are, and actually, it's where the windows actually are already in. This is, you can see, behind, on the back of the photograph, is Westwood, the connecting block, and window frames being delivered, glass being delivered, and glass is in. It happened last week. It went up really fast. The back of the building, looking at it from the playground, actually, windows are in as well here already, and there's some beautiful siding going up here and in the front. It's a horizontal metal, kind of a copper color on the back, and on the front, it's kind of a fish scale metal plate that is great. It looks just great. So looking at the kind of two sides of the building, you can see a little bit at the bottom here. It looks brown, but it's actually kind of a copper-y color on that side. At Redtail, just a couple of slides in here again, the addition is on the north side, kind of a mirror image with Jeffers. The addition is just on the other side, so two kindergarten classrooms, a resource area, some staff room. And this is not that long ago when they were bringing the snow blower up to the roof to start roofing.
It was Thursday.
Pardon me? It could be Thursday, I know, but fortunately, the roof is on now, so the roof going down. Again, this is a rubber roof because we hope to add another story onto this. So if it was permanent, we would put a hot roof down on it. Jeff...I'm sorry, going back here. So at this point last week, there was not a lot going on inside, but right now, there are interior block walls going up and moving fast here as well. Jeffers Pond, you can see, again, mirror image of the addition that's at Redtail, two kindergarten classrooms, resource area, doors out to the playground. Blockwork, this is what the inside of Redtail looks like now, and Jeffers Pond is getting ready to be...actually, interior finish is getting ready to paint as soon as we finish burnishing the walls a little bit there. Mechanical going in here as well, and some sheet rock happening. Almost completely done there with the sheet rock. Jeff, feel free to jump in if I'm missing something here.
Sure. You got it.
Okay. And it just looks great from the outside, the blockwork, the decorative soldier courses above the windows. It's just really a beautiful addition to the site. At Bridges, that's where we're going, and this is kind of from the same view right now. So metal stud walls, they've been...they're started out building these metal panels on the floor and then standing them up in place, tying them together, and then standing them up, bracing them back, setting the joists, the roof joists, on top of those walls, and then you can see the joists lined up there, and they're actually putting...this is all done. The roofing is all on now, and...or not the roofing, but the roof joists, and they're putting sheeting on the exterior walls. So you've probably...if you've driven by this week, you've seen some OSB on the outside, and so flying along there as well. Twin Oaks, again, a couple phases to this project. We've got the classroom addition on the upper level, which kind of wraps around, and then the locker rooms and auditorium cafeteria. So we can't do a lot right now, but during spring break week, we did get into an area in the corner of the...of that upper addition. It's a three-bay receiving area and took a...some old sewer lines, waste separating tank out, and just get a little bit of a head, and then we've been doing demo in the locker room. So this is them at work, lower-level locker rooms. They have been doing this during school. The staff there has been amazing and just very patient, both with the noise and the vibration inside, as well as kind of the traffic that they had to deal with, with the waste coming in and/or coming out of the building. And this is the cool machine that hopefully we can get...ah, it was a really cool video, but it says "Request access," and I don't think I have it here. Nope, I don't. So...but it's a robot, a demo robot, that is...it's run with joysticks, so you strap this little joystick onto your waist, and it has an arm on it. An operator runs it. It has the arm that can tear into walls, tear down ceilings, tear up floors, and also a water hose, so it sprays it and keeps the dust down. It's just amazingly quick and efficient way a demonstration human in action here, and clear it out. And it's pretty amazing how fast it went with the tools we have now. This is in that upper level, in that garage bay that we were talking about, the waste separator that had to be torn out. It was just amazing. They got this little backhoe in there, and it was...can see it right at the top of the photo. There's a couple of lines. Those are power lines. So it was some pretty tricky work getting in there with a backhoe to pull that out. That's inside the building, so a really good operator there. So that is done, and they poured the curb, I think, and... Yes, yesterday. Yeah. Over at Hidden Oaks, we have been flying along on the east side. We're going to wait...the green additions are the cafeteria, lunchroom, that's waiting until summer, as well as the interior work, but over break tore into that flex ed PE space on the south side of the building. This is looking at the northeast corner, pouring footings, pumper truck pumping in the concrete into the footings. Footings poured and blockwork starting. It's just...these are mud mats that they put down just because the site was so challenging with the spring thaw to prevent this from happening. So...but, you know, scaffolding going up, scaffolding coming down. It's just really flying along back there. So you can see on this one, the foundation blockwork with the rerod getting tied into the existing building, some of the bond beams that will be hung on the wall. I think those are up already, so am I correct?
Lintels are up last week.
Yep, up last week. And then this is the south side, so this was the pool entrance. It'll now be the flex PE classroom space. And we had some work to do in here. There was a sewer manhole in here. You can see it, digging it out right in the front, lower-left corner. There were also some...thank you.
Drain tile.
Thank you, drain tile. Yes, that we had to take out. So they dug that out, tied the waste line back in. There, on the left hand, it's getting ready to be taken out. On the right hand, it's out. And just a reminder of where we were just a month ago, March 1st, pouring footings in the snow. Much better now. Could happen again this week. So just flying along there with this great weather. High school, this is the tech ed addition, which has the roof on it now, and roof completed, and it also just got the concrete floor poured in there today...yesterday.
Friday.
Friday.
It was yesterday.
So on...yes, it does seem like it. So the additions are getting blocked up. This is on the second floor. You can see the concrete plate decking and the metal beams that are being used to tie into the existing building. This is looking out from the existing high school into the space that is going to be the tower extension. Hamilton Ridge is for Jeff. Oh, here. Questions about that or anything else I can...it's just pretty amazing, and it was great to have last week, especially with the decent weather last week. Got a lot done in there.
And I'll mirror what Maureen said about staff and admin at all the schools. I mean, we are construction at the schools, and staff have been really, really good. So it makes our job a lot easier when we work together. In front of you, we have bid package number 15, Hamilton Ridge Footing and Structural Package. We had four bids, and I'll go through the award letter, and you also have the bid tabulation in your packet. Work Scope 1, cast in place. We're recommending go to Thompson Construction in the amount of $997,473. Work Scope 2 is structural precast concrete, Wells Concrete Products, in the amount of Work Scope number 3, structural steel supply, in the amount of $587,000 to American Structural Metals. And Work Scope number 4, earthwork, to Dirt Merchants, in the amount of $232,030. We were under on this bid by over $300,000, so finally, some good news. And with that, I am willing to take questions and looking for Board approval.
First, I'll take a motion to accept the bid package that's been presented.
So made.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Enrique. Any questions or comments?
I'm keeping it under budget. That doesn't happen very often nowadays, so it's awesome.
A rare word. I'd just like to add that this was discussed at the Flirt Meeting, so there's no surprises.
No, thank you, Maureen.
Okay.
Other than we were under.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hey, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Strategic Direction Number 5, Integrating Technology for Teaching. Marcus Malazo.
I'm going to close these, this PowerPoint, if that's okay.
You know how to do that?
I'm working on it, yeah. Figuring it out. Now, we'll minimize that one. This is all queued up. Good evening, School Board Members. Dr. Stallow, my name is Marcus Malazo. I'm the Director of Technology for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present. Last March, I was at the work session, work study session, to talk about the laptop proposal for staff. We had a really good question-and-answer session during that meeting, and since that meeting, I've received a couple of follow-up questions, which I did my best to answer and get back to you, and I did send that and share that with the entire Board. So I'm asking at this time, are there any additional questions that I can answer at this time?
Does anyone have any questions? I'll ask if there's any other questions before. Okay, go ahead.
One of the questions that we had at the study session was the ability to, during the lease of the MacBook Airs, to be able to swap them out for maybe more enhanced models if they come out, or the new chipset from Apple.
Yep.
Was there any answer on that one?
I did check with the leasing company, and the leasing...the agreement is as stands and as stated in the contract, so there was not an opportunity to swap out mid-lease for a newer model.
And this is a five-year?
Four-year.
Four-year, okay.
With a payment option at the end.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Are there any other questions before I take a motion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the proposal for technology as presented?
So made.
By Enrique. Second?
Second.
By Jonathan. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Onto new business, we have an activities update. Activities Director Reitz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Directors of the Board, Dr. Stallow. Thank you for having me tonight. I just want to give you a quick overview of the work that we've been doing in fine arts, activities, and athletics. And I'll start by just sharing with you our connection to the school day. I feel very strongly, and I have a bunch of coaches and advisors that feel very strongly as well, that we are an extension of the school day, that we are a teaching and learning program, that our coaches are teachers, and we're really trying to use this common language with all stakeholders that, you know, we're here to prepare the person and not the path. And we're attempting to define success beyond the scoreboard, and I share that with you because the coaches have all gone through some extensive trainings on sort of finding their why, and every coach that is a part of our program writes a purpose statement. They've identified core values that they want to model and teach within their programs. So really, the sport or the fine art is just the platform for teaching some life lessons, and they use these purpose statements and share them with their athletes and model some of these skills, performance skills and moral character skills that they feel are important in their programs. I'm going to come back to this a little bit later when we have a success slide. So just quickly, by the numbers, we're still the seventh-largest high school in the state, and I do see us moving up the ladder over the next few years and getting into the top five as our enrollment increases. Some schools are decreasing enrollment, and these numbers are...they take our free and reduced lunch numbers and subtract them, so that's why they look a little bit different than our actual enrollment numbers. But the seventh-largest high school in the state, and our participation numbers continue to go up in most of our programs. So the biggest challenge I think my office faces is finding opportunity for athletes and new programs emerging, and we're trying to do everything we can to connect our students to the school day and to each other and find a reason to be excited every day to come to school. So the enrollment numbers are listed there for you. Some programs cut, and so the numbers don't change from year to year. Other programs, the numbers have gone up. We saw a subtle decrease in football participation numbers, but those numbers are working their way back up, so we're pleased there. Other areas that have really started to grow, our cheer program has started to explode in this community. Our theater program has really taken off, and we have more opportunities for kids, both at the middle school through our community ed program and the three performances that we offer at the high school. Our winter season numbers are up. The robotics, both FTC, the smaller robot, and FRC, there's...continues to be a lot of interest with our robotics programs. Intermural basketball numbers were way up this year. 245 students joined our intermural basketball program, and as facilities expand, I see that number increasing. We have not found a way to engage some of our female students in our intermural programming, so that continues to be a challenge. We'd like to see more of our girls participating. But dance numbers continue to increase. Boys and girls basketball numbers are very healthy in this community, as well as hockey, and we are carrying large numbers in Nordic ski, in Alpine ski. So we are...we're having good success engaging our students and getting them to find something that they can, you know, find their niche or be proud of to be a part of in our program. Fall scoreboard, I'll just give you a couple highlights. First, our girls tennis team won their sixth consecutive Salsaburban Conference Championships, so we're really proud of the way that program is performing. We also had our girls cross-country team qualify for the state tournament this past fall, and our girls swim and dive team may have had the best season in school history. They won the conference championship and were ninth overall at the state meet. Onto winter, the winter season just wrapped up. We started spring today. We had our first baseball and softball games outdoors this eve- We had our first baseball and softball games outdoors this evening, but the winter season was also very successful. We had a couple state champions that we'll highlight here in a second, but our dance team, for the sixth consecutive year, advanced to the state meet, and the second year that both jazz and kick teams performed at state. And we had our boys Nordic team for the second consecutive year also qualified for the state meet, so excited for them. Sean Dwyer is our first repeat state champion in boy swimming. He defended his title in the, in the 500 Free and swam an All-American automatic time. And then Cal Sun, who was here a few weeks ago being recognized for his artwork, if you remember, earned a state championship at 195 pounds for our wrestling team, so really proud of them. This is Charlotte Bowles. She's our Athena Award winner, so the Athena Award goes to the most outstanding athlete at Prior Lake High School. We have a selection committee that went through survey data and considered all things regarding performance and character during the school day, and Charlotte emerged as our winner. We had some amazing candidates nominated for the Athena Award, but Charlotte will be honored in May at an Athena banquet. And so, I want to congratulate her, and it's, it's incredible honor. She was a state champion last year as a junior, and she was third in doubles this year as a senior. I wanted to touch briefly on the community support that I feel daily in this position. We had one exceptional evening a few weeks ago, was the section final for our boys basketball team, and we came up short on the scoreboard, but when I stopped and looked around, it was a pretty amazing experience. We had, we were right at capacity, Jim. Two thousand three hundred and fifty people. Wanted for. We had to stop selling tickets. And one of the things that I thought was neat is Marcus helped us set up a live stream of what was happening in the gym, in our commons area. We had a couple hundred people that couldn't get in the gym, and they sat in the cafeteria, watched the game on our big screen, and bought concessions. And despite the, the score, it was an amazing evening, and it just struck me how much support we have and, and how connected our kids feel to the culture and pride in being a Laker. And, and it was, it was a fun night for those that were able to make it. Once the evening was over, I looked back and enjoyed it. During the game, it was a little stressful. Onto some fine arts, and we have, I, I think one of the biggest leaps we've taken in co-curriculars is in our performance in our fine arts. Our theater program, as I said, has really come a long way, and our speech, mock trial, knowledgeable, our band and choir programs. We were, we were always very good, and, but when we got into the South Suburban and we started to see what some of the other schools in the South Suburban were doing, I really feel like we've taken a leap, and we're starting to compete with some of the best fine art programs in the state of Minnesota. It's a tribute to our students, of course, and our advisors, but just quickly, speech was third in the, in the toughest section in the state. That includes Apple Valley and Lakeville North, and, and those are two very good speech teams. We had five students advance this year, and we look forward to, to great things coming up in the speech state tournament. Our knowledgeable team, this is amazing to me, qualified for state for the fifteenth consecutive year, and I think they have a chance to win it. It's this week, we have five amazingly talented, bright students that all sort of have their own niche, whether it's in science or in math or in current events. They just do an amazing job and, and they truly work as a team. So, they're up at Cragins this week. I just hope that they can get home with the snowstorm coming, but they leave Wednesday, compete all day Thursday, and I was told today the meet goes on. And then it brings us to our band. There's not another band in the state that had an opportunity this year to perform at TCF Bank. They marched at halftime of a Gophers football game. Our marching band program also performed at TCO when our Lakers played a football game versus Lakeville North there. And they're also at US Bank Stadium for the Prep Bowl, where I believe, was it Lakeville North that won that one? Anyway. Wasn't there, because ours was. So, they, they performed at halftime, which is an honor to be asked, to perform at halftime of the Prep Bowl, and they did an amazing job there. But it doesn't stop there. They were, our band performed at the governor's inauguration. Sorry, I can get that off the screen there. They also were invited to the Minneapolis Convention Center. The percussion ensemble performed, and I know everybody that was in attendance there said they just did an amazing job. And, and this is, they've done all of this, and they've also supported our sport programs with the pep band. They travel to over twenty events between fall and winter, and then they also have their own concerts. So, I'm just so impressed with Director Kumus and Director Schram for all of the work and the time and the dedication, and then obviously how their students are excelling in our band program. And that leads us to our, our choir update. We had several students compete in the Region II double A solo ensemble. We had twenty-nine entries, and we had two excellent and twenty-seven superior ratings, and that was more than all of the other schools that we competed against. So, our choir program is, is knocking it out of the park right now. And then we also had those four represent the South Suburban Conference as all-conference award recipients. So, there's a lot of success and a lot of things to be proud of, but the three things I'm most proud of at the end of every season, I have an opportunity to talk with athletes, and the question I often ask is, do you feel like you've developed lifelong relationships, friendships? And we talk a little bit about those. Have you made lifelong memories and what are they? And then the last question I always ask is, what are some lifelong lessons you've learned? And I, I think this is how we truly define the success of our co-curricular program. We are connecting students with meaningful adults. We are connecting them to each other, and we're connecting them to the, the culture of our school day, and so I couldn't be prouder of our programs. Questions?
Any questions? Mary?
No, with the, the outstanding at the choir, that was, was that at Mankato?
It was down at Mankato for the, the ensemble, yes, the soul ensemble.
Did Prior Lake have the only perfect score too, or something like that?
I would have to check. I didn't hear that, but that may be.
Yeah, it was all over the news. We had one sophomore that actually scored a perfect.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'll have to look into it. That's great.
Any other questions or comments? Stacy?
I just have one, um, just a couple of comments. Yeah, I think over the years, just being on the board, to see the growth of the program is amazing. I am gonna issue a little bit of challenge to you, okay, because I, and you've already, you've already kind of critiqued yourself in that area, but for the intermurals, for females, it's been a challenge for us year after year after year. And with us moving to more facilities, I guess I'm gonna challenge you as to find something that really they get into. And I don't know what it is, but I do think that that is somewhere where we need to be serving everybody, no matter what the gender is. So, I would hope that next year we have some super successful program.
Yes, and, you know, I think dance is probably the one that the girls would like to see the most, where they would, we'd have an intermural dance program that would perform at halftime of our basketball games during the winter, separate from our competitive dance season. And then, you know, we've got, we've got more girls doing trap shooting. We've got some girls that are interested in bass fishing. We've got girls signing up for mountain biking and ultimate frisbee, and so I see, I see a trend. It's, it's starting to, to happen more, but there are equestrian programs and figure skating programs that I think we can leverage to try to gain a little more interest as well.
Great.
I'd like to see more in robotics.
Oh, yes. And numbers have increased in robotics, but that is another area where I think we can do a better job and get more of our female students out.
Did we get, like, on the intermural basketball? I mean, I know you've had that for years, and the numbers grown, like, every year, but is there any female participation?
We did not have any this year.
Not one?
We have in years past, we did not have any this year.
It's just, I mean, I know in a lot of these sports, kids get cut, and I, they're, I mean, no matter what their level is or ability, I mean, there's kids that want to play. And so, I, I just think it's important that we try to continue to find a space for them.
I do too. And I, I do see badminton and pickleball being options in the future too, when the facilities are there, and so wherever there's interest, we'll try to pursue it. And so, you know, I would encourage all of our female students to come down and, and just let me know what their thoughts are, and we'll try to work with them and get things added.
Perfect. Michael, did you?
Just two comments. One is, I think this is part of what we were thinking of during the referendum, that these after-school hours were still a continuation of learning and that these spaces were going to be used around the clock. And so, I'd like to just, I was not on the board previously, but I'd like to just kind of congratulate you on, on that vision coming to fruition. And on a personal note to thank you as well, I'm more involved on the art side than the sports side, but I can say as a member of PAA and Band Boosters that, Russ, you're not just supportive of the athletics, but you are right there when the rubber hits the road for all the other programs. And I think it's just important that we acknowledge that you're, you, you're covering every single aspect, and I've seen that support firsthand, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just my quick add would be, I did a little math in my head, and you had twelve hundred and roughly twelve hundred and eighty-seven participants in winter stuff. That's half of our kids. I mean, I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, I, I feel, what I often say is, you know, we take a third of our student body and condense them down into kind of one wing at the end of the school day. But, it's anywhere from eight hundred to twelve hundred students every day after school, you know, finding a way to, to stay in the last class of the day, right? Extend their school day, so it's, yeah, it's pretty rewarding.
Any other comments? Doing great. Get more of those girls involved and it'll be perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to medical dental insurance premiums. Julie and Jim?
Thanks, Jeff. It's not quite as interesting. I have you sitting here. We had a insurance committee meeting, and our consultant gave us some information, and it was the recommendation coming out of that committee that we would increase health insurance premiums by two percent for the nineteen-twenty school year. So, that's actually, I think, in this day and age, very, very, very good. And that, not only does that two percent cover the increase, but it also helps increase the fund balance as well, which we've been working on improving at the same time. So, I think this is very good news, and so our recommendation is that you take action on this two percent increase for the, for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year.
Julie, did you have anything to add?
I wanted to just say that since we've instituted the self-insured health insurance, our average has been just slightly over two percent for all of these years, and I think it's, was a really, it continues to be a really productive thing for us to continue with this self-insured health insurance and dental as well. It has been rewarding to see this happen as, as it's throughout these years.
And part of that action would be a zero percent increase in the dental insurance as well.
Do I have a motion to approve the medical and dental insurance premium increases? By Mary. Second?
Second.
Stacy? Any comments or questions?
I just have one question, if that's okay. The, do we have groups in the, in the district that are not currently in the health insurance program still? Any employees or employee groups?
There are some employee groups that do not have insurance offered to them. Right? They have it offered, but we don't provide, we don't, there isn't a district contribution to that premium.
Are there any, I'm not sure what the situation is there, but I mean, as we increase our numbers, do we, do we improve our percentages overall as far as our rates, et cetera? No?
Rates are really just based on claims usage, and so it really depends on our pool of people and how healthy they are. And so, that really is the driving force behind our health insurance. A lot of the reasons that we are able to keep our rates so low is because a lot of our staff are familiar with our program, and they do know that what they do and how they utilize our health insurance is important. And we also really take a good look at our fixed costs and those things that we can control, and we really work hard to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck in those areas.
I guess my question was, is obviously increased numbers balances out the risk pool? And it is, have we seen, I know we've grown quite a bit, and I didn't know if we've seen any cognizable benefit from that.
That, because we're already a, a large group, just adding more to it doesn't really spread that risk any further at this point.
Any other comments or questions?
I remember when you first introduced this, and it was sounding very risky, but it's been a really good program, so I appreciate your pushing forward with it and being innovative and moving it along, so thank you.
Do I have a motion to, oh, no, I guess I have a motion, don't I? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That motion carries six zero. Thank you. Okay, we have a number of proclamations this evening, which I will read. Getting my reading in tonight. I had them marked. Oh, they could go that way. A second, if I can't find it. Here it is, okay. The first proclamation, whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers may fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories, now therefore, we, the School Board of Prior Lake Savagery Schools, to hereby proclaim the week of May sixth to the tenth, two thousand nineteen, as National Teacher Appreciation Week, with the designation of Tuesday, May seventh, two thousand nineteen, to be National Teacher Appreciation Day within the Prior Lake Savage Areas School District. We urge that we, we urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers on our lives. That's the first one. I don't think those need a vote or anything for approval. The second is for childhood, childhood nutrition. Whereas nutritious meals at schools are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the staff of the district's school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas the week of April twenty-ninth to May third, two thousand nineteen, is Child Nutrition Employee Week, now therefore, be it resolved that Prior Lake Savage Areas School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children. And there is one more for Volunteer Appreciation Week. Whereas Volunteer Appreciation Week offers the opportunity to recognize and to thank public school volunteers who contribute unselfishly to the success of Prior Lake Savage Area students, teaching and support staff, and the goals of public education, and whereas parental and community involvement is a significant factor in the quality of our schools and the success of our students, and whereas we appreciate the dedicated volunteers who give their time and talent to assist professional educators and support staff, and whereas volunteers reflect the highest values of our society and become role models for students by demonstrating an interest in education, and whereas volunteers are called upon to assist teachers and staff with the day-to-day activities involved in providing a balanced education for our students, and are an important part of a team that strives to ensure that each and every one of our students succeeds, and whereas it is fitting to support the goals of this observance as when parents, schools, and communities work together in preparing students, today's students for tomorrow's world, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board recognizes the week of April seventh through the thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, as Volunteer Appreciation Week in the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Those are all three very worthy weeks or causes to support, so hopefully when you see those people, you'll acknowledge them. Moving on to policy, these are our second and final reading of the following policies. I believe most of these involve, Julie, did you have comments to make on any of them?
I just want to, on page six hundred and eighteen, Policy Number Eight-O-Two, Number C, it's missing a change from one hundred thousand to one hundred and seventy-five thousand to, for the bid, you know, it follows the bidding laws, and so that should say one hundred and seventy-five thousand under C.
Our copy does.
It does.
Is it changed on there?
It's in the, in the board, what it does.
Yeah.
Doesn't, so.
Mine didn't. Oh, it didn't? Yeah.
In the context of it, not just the title. In the context.
Oh, under like?
Yeah.
The first sentence.
C?
In the first sentence.
Oh, C. Got it.
Says one seventy-five. Is that what it's supposed to say?
One seventy-five.
Under C. Well, that's B, first line.
That's B, there, so it's.
Oh, gotcha. Oh, gotcha. It should say one hundred and seventy-five.
It should say one hundred and seventy-five, there. That's the only change that I'm recommending from our meeting.
And that's more of a typo than a change.
It's more of a typo, right? It's not really a change, it's just a typo was missed.
Okay. Would everyone be okay with taking all these policies as one? I think so, yep. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the policies seven oh three, seven oh four, seven oh five, seven thirteen, seven twenty, and eight oh two?
So moved.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Enrique, any comments or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Thank you. We'll go on to administrative reports. Dr. Stahl?
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential, as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community, and tonight I'd like to highlight some of the work in which we have been engaged. Our annual Community Crisis Response Team meeting will be held April nineteenth. This is a chance for our administrative team, along with Board Chair Lee Shimick, to meet with our local emergency responders, including police and fire departments, Scott County Emergency Management, and Illini ambulance, so that we can stay connected and continue to establish coordinated responses to any potential crisis that could occur. Tomorrow, myself, along with Independent School District One-Nine-One Superintendent Cindy Amoroso, will be meeting with local business members from the Savage Chamber of Commerce to talk about how our school districts are meeting the changing needs of our students in our schools. Mary France, I know, is joining us, along with several Prior Lake Savage Area Schools administrators, and some of our MinCap students as well. If any other board members' schedules have changed and are now able to attend, please let us know, and we can make that happen. Our final elementary attendance boundary input team meeting will be held this Wednesday evening. The team will be reviewing maps that incorporate feedback from the last input and design team meetings. Outcomes from Wednesday's meetings will be brought forward to the board on April twenty-second, during the April twenty-second study session for review prior to board action in May. Thank you.
Okay, are there any administrative reports? Okay, board reports? Anybody on this side have a board report? Michael?
I attended the Early Childhood Advisory Committee meeting, and we, I just, we were introduced to Lori Parker for Early Childhood Special Ed, and that was really fascinating to see how with our youngest learners, how we're addressing some of those needs.
Well, the curriculum meeting was held prior to the study session, in which the same content was reviewed, and we kind of talked about the new instructional excellence framework, which is the umbrella around all the different areas that we've had independent projects in and improvements in, and putting that under the instructional excellence framework, and talking about kicking that off, which is really not a change, it's more or less putting everything together, which is, which is very impressive, actually, and it's a, it's a worthwhile endeavor. The other thing is, I was a volunteer down at Minnetonka's, I mean, Mankato, on March twenty-second, so that was very impressive to go to the, the choir concert, and there were about thirty kids in the competition. As Russ stated, twenty-seven received superb, two excellent, and one perfect, which was the, kind of the talk of the whole school, actually. And it was kind of a volunteer basis, because there were solo competitions, but both of our music instructors showed up and really, really helped present and, present for Prior Lake very, very nicely, especially considering the competition was stiff. So that was very impressive, and there's really nothing that wasn't mentioned already on the flurps, so I'm done.
Yes, the Special Education Advisory Committee met right before today's board meeting, so it's fortuitous. A lot of the discussion centered around the transition night that happened in February for students who are transitioning, transitioning into kindergarten from early childhood special education, those moving from elementary into middle school and middle school to high school. So during the transition night, there are more than eighty parents who were in attendance on behalf of their students, on behalf of the learners, and those who are transitioning from elementary to middle school represented the largest population. So it was a, great to see. There was a panel that was available at the transition night that represented each of the different schools and different groups, so that parents could get their questions answered there on the spot as far as how different changes or transitions would impact their, their learners, so. The, overall, the ASEC is looking to engage more, looking to find ways to bring in more parent input into the process, into the advisory piece, so we'll be looking at that in the future.
I'm going to start by talking a little about, about student council. This weekend, we've attended the MASC, MHS State Student Council Conference, that was really cool. During the conference, students got to listen to speakers Tom Cody and Nate Eklund, and learn a little bit about leadership styles and how to lead within our school, alongside attending collaborations with other schools to help better our, like, climate in our school, and also participating in big ideas, which included acceptable protests, school censorship, social media policies in schools, diversity issues in schools, guilt by association, mental health, sexual harassment, student empowerment, class rank and weighted grades, along with transgender and LGBTQ within schools. So hopefully, those will be sent out to the Minnesota Association of Principals and the Minnesota Association of Superintendents. So that was very cool to get our Prior Lake input into those statements that we formed. Alongside, we also had Tommy Hesch, who's on our student council, he's our vice president. He won the Alice Erickson Scholarship at the banquet, which is a pretty big deal for our council. Alongside, we also won the Outstanding Student Council Award for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen year. At school, we currently just began quarter four. I wasn't there for it, because I was at student council, but I'm sure it went well. Spring sports are also starting up. A lot of them had some tryouts over spring break, some tryouts this week, really getting into that stuff, the spring sports, and then we also have a bunch of spring activities coming up for all the students, including like volleyball, paint war, outdoor movies, surf and turf, eco stock, cool stuff happening, yeah.
Okay, future events. Prior Lake High School's Spring Play, The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe, is April twelfth to the fourteenth, and we have a School Board Study Session on April twenty-second that will start at six o'clock. And in preparing for that work session, I've come to realize that there's a lot of things we're going to be going over, so I would suggest to the board members that you read through things, and if you have questions, if you try and get some of those things clarified beforehand, that might be helpful. Otherwise, we'll be in for a very long evening. It's a very full agenda, and some of the things just have to come forward, we can't really delay them, so be prepared. Please prepare. And if there's nothing more before the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. By Mary, second?
Second.
By Enrique, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned.